Pledge.
I was just to tie the reins down.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scarlett, please note we're in full attendance except for Ms. Solis, who's absent. I want to welcome everyone to our regularly scheduled meeting of May 20. First on our agenda is items from council. And there's only one item there, which is mine for now, but does anyone have anything else they'd like to bring up first? If not, I'll just go into my one item. Does everyone have a copy of this?
Sure.
Okay. It's a school zone engineering study. And I guess, I don't know when, how long ago it was here. I do want to recognize, we have one school board member in the audience. Mr. Svetlik is here. But we met, or I met, along with Charmel, and I think we had maybe another city staff member present a few months back with some school district officials from Victoria ISD regarding traffic issues around West High School in Cade. And as a result of that meeting, a few recommendations, one of them being, I think, the fence was put up, if you've been out there, noticed the fence near the property that deters some of the issues and problems that were being caused. But one of the questions was, "School Zone," and that's what this study is. We, on behalf, the district had asked us, the school district asked us to study whether or not a school zone was warranted there. In this particular time, it's been determined, we asked the Gunda Corporation, who are experts in this area, and they've done this for a lot of areas around the state, apparently. Their recommendation is it does not warrant a school zone there. But we want to pass this along to the school district, let them have a copy, or two, or three, or whatever they need, but I want council to be aware of it.
Now, one thing the study did recommend, and Lynn's department is doing it, is some additional no parking signs on the east side of eighty-seven. So we will take care of getting those signs erected.
And that is mentioned in there. Thank you for, I forgot, I saw that, and those signs are going up, so. I don't know that there's, I just wanted y'all to be aware of that, so. Anything else under items from council? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move into B2, which is citizens' communications. So if anyone in the audience wants to speak about anything whatsoever, now's the time. Come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and limit your time speaking. Okay. Seeing no one that wants to come forward to, under citizens' communications, we'll move forward to ordinances.
Item C1 is an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the city of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of certain territory consisting of approximately 6.713 acres of land at the request of DGMP Incorporated, adopting a service plan for the territory to be annexed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, and providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading, so we will need a public hearing.
So let's go ahead and open the public hearing now. If anyone wants to speak specifically on item C1, now would be the time. Okay. Seeing none on that item, we'll close the public hearing on C1 and move into council deliberations. We'll need a motion.
Move we adopt?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any questions? Discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes.
Item C2 is an ordinance directing the city manager to execute the contract of sale to transfer approximately .454 acres within the Goodwin Avenue Street right-of-way to East End Lumber Company in exchange for $15,800 and declaring an effective date. This is also a first reading, so we will need a public hearing on this as well.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing on C2, if anyone wants to speak on that specific item. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on C2. Council?
Make a motion, we adopt C2.
Second.
Okay, so a motion, a second. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item passes.
All right. Item C3 is an ordinance amending the 2013-2014 City of Victoria general fund budget to provide $250,000 in funding for the US 59 Business and Loop 463 Traffic Signal Project, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and declaring an effective date. This is also a first reading, so we will need a public hearing.
We do need a public hearing. Okay. So we'll open the public hearing on C3, if anyone wants to speak to that item specifically. Okay. Seeing none, let's close the public hearing. Council?
Been a long time.
Motion?
Make a motion to approve C3, second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
I had a couple of texts. What's the total cost of this project?
Total cost of the construction of the signal is estimated at $385,000, of which the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation has in their current year budget $135,000, leaving $250,000, which textile will reimburse to the city. But since it is a reimbursement, we'll need to go ahead and amend the general fund to allow for the expenditures to be made, and then textile will reimburse the city, which will put back into general fund revenue.
General fund and Sales Tax Development Corporation, general fund as well?
Yes, the general fund portion will actually upfront the money that textile will reimburse us.
But we're going to give the money back to the Sales Tax Corp.
No, that, the money reimbursed from textile will go back into general fund revenue.
How much is that?
That, we expect it's full $250,000.
$250,000, okay.
It'll be a net wash to general fund.
The CM1 was a little bit confusing, so. But I had my questions answered earlier, so. We're also, of course, this is just the budget amendment, and then on E7 is when the actual resolution for it, so. And these traffic lights will be, just for the publics, out, 463 and 59 Business, will be two of them, one on either side, this is out going towards the airport. Okay.
That was voted on, I believe, over two years ago by the MPO as a project worthy of doing, and it's just taken us this long. That's reason for my comment, why so long?
Yes.
I presume there was a warranty?
Moving at the glacial speed of government.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes.
Item C4 is an ordinance adopting the standard specifications for Public Works Construction Version 2014.4, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is also a first reading, so we will need a public hearing.
Okay, let's open the public hearing on C4. Okay. Seeing no one that wants to speak to that item, we'll close the public hearing. Council?
Move we adopt C4?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Mr. Short, did you want to?
Here to answer questions, Mayor.
This is, of course, a full limestone base revision on what we've been talking about.
That's correct. We'll be deleting the current minimum gravel base section, deleting the full-depth asphalt section, adding the limestone section with geogrid, and then making a small modification to the current concrete section to allow gravel base or stabilized subgrade under it.
And I'm glad to see that geogrid was added in as well. That, I believe, is a very positive thing, extend the lives of the streets.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. You want to read the consent agenda items?
Sure. There are four agenda items on the consent agenda tonight that'll be approved by a single vote. First is the approval of minutes of the special meeting of April 22, 2014, and the minutes of the regular meeting of May 6, 2014. The second is resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an administrative and soft-cost agreement with Grant Works Incorporated for the administration of the City of Victoria's Home Program Grant in an amount not to exceed $148,800 and declaring an effective date. The third is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Biblioteca to provide the Victoria Public Library with radio frequency identification security system in the amount of $67,088.35 and declaring an effective date. And the fourth is a resolution awarding the downtown water and sanitary sewer replacement project to Palacios Marine and Industrial Coatings Incorporated of Palacios, Texas, for their low bid of $3,751,414.70, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project, authorizing the director of public works to execute change orders to the project not to exceed the amount authorized by Texas Local Grant Code Section 252.048 and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion, we adopt?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Consent agenda is passed, let's move into resolutions.
Item E1 is a resolution appointing new members to the city county board of health and declaring an effective date.
So, for clarification, we have, E1 has one name, well, let's back up. There are two vacancies, and...
Has two names, doesn't it?
I'm sorry?
Two names?
Yes.
Well, there's...
Three.
Yes, three names.
Actually.
But there is one choice, should we decide to make it.
No, there's, there's two choices. There's two that need to be appointed.
Oh, so just pick from...
But you have three names, you have three options.
Pick from the three, and then, I got you. Are we going to do any?
I apologize, I did not have ballots prepared for this tonight.
It's okay.
Well, I did notice that Ms. Bossay is from Goliad and does not reside in Victoria County, and I don't know that, we had a minor discussion about that, I think. And the other two do live in Victoria County, matter of fact, inside the city limits, and I'd like to see that. Probably keep it in, you know, people that are more directly affected would be from here.
And we did have that discussion. Are you going to make that in the form of a motion to have, and Mr. Way and Mr.?
Move that we nominate Robin McCalka?
Mahaka. Sorry, I know Robin, so I want to make sure her name pronounced correctly.
And David V. Way.
Second.
For those two positions.
Second.
All right, so that's a motion to approve this resolution with those two names in the blanks, and it is second.
And a second. Okay, are there discussions or any amendments? I don't see any further discussion or amendment, so we'll just vote on it with those two names. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
All right. Item E2 is a resolution granting a variance to Section 20-82A1 of Chapter 20 of the Victoria City Code, which requires one driveway per residential lot for each local street on which they front for property located at 403 Brooks Road, owned by Benoit Comerson, and declaring an effective date.
Move we adopt?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for E2. I know you're all familiar with this issue, I don't know that there's any discussion. Okay.
This is based upon his ability to come up to city standards and...
Yes, you know, I don't know that you want any comment from staff, but there are conditions in here that'll bring that driveway up to code, and it's satisfactory to both parties. We'll move on down the road.
Sounds good.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Item E3 is a resolution granting a variance to Section 21-64 of Chapter 21 of the Victoria City Code, which requires all buildings that require permits to conform with minimum building setbacks for property located at 323 Tescany Drive, which is owned by Procop Custom Homes LLC, and declaring an effective date.
Council?
Motion, we adopt E3?
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions? I read through it, it makes sense to me what happened. Small error, but not a material error.
I'm okay.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, I'll just call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Item E4 is a resolution granting a variance to Section 20-82A1 of Chapter 20 of the Victoria City Code, which requires one driveway per residential lot for each local street on which they front for a property located at 203 Simpson Road, owned by Thomas and Morgan Alabius, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced the name, and declaring an effective date.
Move we adopt?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion, of course, this is something we've seen before. Go ahead, Mr. Albert.
These people are doing what the other gentleman should have done in the first place. They asked for the variance first.
And I, yeah, yeah, and they, I did talk to this lady.
Glad to see that.
She called me to discuss it a bit, but, and one of the things, too, I think staff is still going to look at maybe easing the restrictions, modifying the ordinance slightly to make it easier for the public in situations like this, based on lot size or whatever. So we'll look for something from staff in the future.
It's going to the Planning Commission next month, and so you should see back in July. Planning Commission did not have a May meeting.
Okay.
Or does not have a May meeting.
Very good, because these pop up frequently enough.
Yes, they do. And relooking at the width, you know, that will accommodate two drives.
Right, right. And I don't think any, you know, this city has ever intended to be punitive on anybody, but when we have enough variances come forward, we obviously recognize there must be some issue there where we need to modify it, so it's more flexible for our citizens, because it's their city, so. All right. Let's see, did we vote? We have a motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
All right. Item E5 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city and Group Mac LLC for the creation of a municipal utility district in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction and the development of a master-planned residential and commercial community, and declaring an effective date.
Council?
Make a motion, we adopt E5?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Just a question I had on all the other agreements, timeframe was? Three months, four months?
We don't know.
Don't know, six months?
It's going to depend on how quickly he's going to want to move. Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is, it's a very, it's an agreement in principle, I think. Good attorney used those words earlier, and it's a very general MOU that he can use, the developer can use, to assist with his financing. It just basically, correct me if I'm wrong, the city understands that he wants to do an MOU, we want to work with him. It's very broad, in case you haven't, I did read through it pretty closely, so. It's just a small first step.
And a memorandum of understanding does not flesh out all the details of it, obviously, but it does hit some general points. We have to start somewhere.
We're not committing to anything, per se, so. Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item E6 is a resolution appointing Charles Grant, George Matthews, Sharon Barnes, Vic Caldwell, Denise Rangel, Kristy Henry, and Mike Rivera to the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund Committee, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion, we adopt E6? Second.
Motion and a second on E6, any discussion?
Mayor, I would like to simply add, for the purpose of anybody who's watching, I know we've talked about this at council before, so y'all are all familiar, but the applications for outside agencies to apply for hotel occupancy tax funding will be posted to the city's website on June 1, and they will be available for download and fill-out and be due returned back to the city by the end of June. So, council, you can expect that we will have a resolution brought to you in early July for you to consider how much money to devote to this project, so that you can, so that we can continue moving this process forward. We do expect to have a press release, just like we did last year, to make sure that the general public is aware that this funding is available.
May I have clarification on the motion? There's seven individuals, and I believe the motion was for the six. So you mean the seven? Aren't there seven?
Item six.
E6.
Item E6 is seven individuals.
Question, Thomas. You were going to do a training for those applicants, or?
Yes, we do, every year we do two training sessions, and my staff is going to be upset with me that I don't remember the dates. Those are already scheduled, and I don't have those dates handy with me, I should have written that down.
They'll be in June.
Those dates will be during June. We do those two separate meetings, so that if anybody is interested in finding out how to go about filling out the application, they're welcome to come to those meetings. It's not a mandatory meeting, you can download the application and fill it out and turn it in without attending one of those meetings, but I know that a lot of the new applicants have questions about that, and we'll be sure to include those dates in our press release. Hopefully Melissa will pick that up and write a story about it.
Good, thank you.
I think the process has worked well the last few years. It's getting better every year, and the training is great. Thank you for, thanks for, Mr. Alvarez for bringing that up, so. Okay, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Item passed.
Just to further explain, I think Scarlett's question a minute ago, I think what Mr. Bucknight said was he made a motion to approve E7 rather than the seven.
E6.
Or E6, I'm sorry, E6 rather than the six. I think that's where the confusion came from, I realized that after we finished answering your question. I always appreciate his precision in how he makes a motion to approve the item under discussion. All right, so item E7 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for a future traffic signal project at Loop 463 in US Highway 59 Business, and declaring an effective date.
Move we adopt?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item passes.
Item E8 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute supplemental agreement number one to the agreement for the installation and reimbursement for the operation and maintenance of traffic signals within a municipality with the Texas Department of Transportation, and declaring an effective date.
We adopt? Second.
Motion and a second. This is just to put those new lights under our control?
Correct.
All right.
This is, well, perhaps we should make a statement so that the public would understand that this is, the City of Victoria maintains the lights, that they help us put them in, but the maintenance of the lights, changing light bulbs on, that the City of Victoria takes care of, and that's always been that way. This is just a resolution accepting that.
Since we're going to get the feedback from the public, we might as well be responsible for taking care of it. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, pass.
Item E9 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a municipal maintenance agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation to define the authority and responsibilities for the maintenance and operation of state highways within the corporate limits of the City of Victoria, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion, we approve E9?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I just don't like the termination clause.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passes. City manager reports.
Andrew's going to talk about the audit, and I assume Steve Van Manen.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, members of council, item F1 is a report on the completion of the audit for our fiscal year ending September 30, 2013. City contracted with Harrison Waldrup and Herrick to perform that service, and we've laid in front of you a, both in paper format as well as a CD, the full comprehensive annual financial report. This was posted to the website back in late March, and also sent to all appropriate agencies to comply with the filing requirements. And Steve Van Manen with Harrison Waldrup and Herrick is going to give you an overview of the actual process and the report itself. Steve?
Mayor, I would like a little direction about the amount of time I have available.
How much time do you need?
Well, it can be as short as five minutes or as long as 20 minutes, it's just up to y'all, how much detail you want me to get into.
Can we split the difference?
Okay. All right, first thing I'd like to direct council's attention to is just the cover itself, the title, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That title is important, because the city, at their option, has elected to provide substantial additional information about the financial activity of the city, far beyond what's required by governmental accounting standards. There is a certificate on Roman numeral page, right in the front of the report, Roman numeral page 15. This is a reproduction of the award that the city received for its 2012 annual financial report. The Government Finance Officers Association receives copies of your document each year, and the report is given to three different individuals that go through the document and grade the content. Does the city comply with the appropriate governmental accounting standards? And I'm pleased to report, this is, I think, the 31st consecutive year that the city has received this award. In the state of Texas, there's about 190 municipalities, out of the 1,200-plus municipalities that do receive this award. So it is an accomplishment for the city, and it's a compliment to the staff to go through the effort to prepare this document. The actual required disclosure in this report stops on page 80. The total number of pages in this document is 233 pages. So there's a lot of effort that the staff goes through to receive this award, and as I said, I think it is significant for the city to get this. Following that, under the Financial Section tab, the first item there is the auditor's opinion. This is really the summation of our report, where on page two, top paragraph, where it says, "In the opinion, in our opinion, these financial statements are fairly presented." This is what is termed a clean opinion. There are actually four different types of opinions that a CPA could give the city, and this is the best form of opinion that a CPA can give the council that these financial statements are accurate. The second type of opinion that I could give the city is that these financial statements are materially correct except for, and that there would be a matter that came up during the audit that required separate disclosure. The third type of opinion that a CPA could give the council is what's called an adverse opinion, where I would state that, in my opinion, the financial statements do not present fairly. And then the fourth type of opinion is what's called a disclaimer of opinion, in which I would say, "I don't know whether they're right or wrong, there's not enough financial information available to make that determination." But the unqualified or clean opinion is the type of opinion that the city has received in prior years, and certainly expects to receive. Now, following the auditor's opinion, there's a section titled Management's Discussion and Analysis. The purpose of this section of the report is to give the users a summarized narrative of the financial activity that occurred in the last fiscal year. As Andrew mentioned, this report goes to various agencies, one of the most important are the bond rating agencies, and this is the section of the report that they go to. They don't want to look at 233 pages of information. They go to the MDNA, and they can very quickly assess what happened with the City of Victoria during the last fiscal year. One of their primary concerns is, did the financial condition of the city improve, or did the financial condition decline during this past fiscal year? And they can find that answer on page eight. There's a statement on page eight that's titled Changes in Net Position. Now, the third row from the bottom is titled Change in Net Position. If that number is a positive number, the financial condition improved over the prior fiscal year. And this table is broken out between the governmental activities. Governmental activities are comprised of the general fund, your special revenue funds, your debt service fund, and your capital project funds. The business-type activities are the utility funds. You've got the utility fund, environmental services, community center, and 700 Main Center. So those are grouped into single columns with both the 2013 and 2012 fiscal years. And as you can see, on that third row from the bottom, under the governmental funds, the change in that position was a positive $1,282,000, and the business-type activities that increased was $10,226,000. So again, that's certainly an indication that the financial condition of the city improved from the previous fiscal year.
Steve?
Yes?
I'm over here.
Oh.
Do you want to tell them the difference between net asset position versus the fund balance, working capital?
We're going there.
Okay.
Okay, getting into the fund financial statements, and those start on page 24. Now, these are your traditional fund financials for the governmental activities. On the left-hand column, the general fund. Now, under the fund balance section of the general fund, you have total fund balance of $17... of $17,861,000. Now, part of that is already committed. You have $2.3 million of fund balance that's already committed from prior obligations that carried over from the previous fiscal year. So your unassigned fund balance as of September 30th was $15,289,000. Now, when we talk about net position and fund balance, there is a big change, and the reconciliation is on the next page, page 26. The total governmental fund balance was $24 million as of September 30th. Now, what's not included in fund balance is the book value of your capital assets. What's also not included in fund balance is the outstanding long-term debt. So we have these pluses and minuses down on the right-hand side to go from your fund balance position of $24 million to your total net position of $116 million. Fund balance is what is available to the city to use for financing future budgets. Capital assets, that's money that's been spent, that's part of the city's assets, but it's not available to meet current obligations. So those are the differences between when you start with fund balance and end up with net position. Now, turn over to page 27 and 28. As I mentioned earlier, the increase in net position was $1.2 million. That's an increase in the financial condition of the city from the previous fiscal year. Now, looking at this statement, the statement of revenues and expenditures, these are the governmental funds, your traditional fund financials. Now, your overall financial condition improved, and your total fund balances went down $2.4 million. So people sometimes tend to equate a decrease in fund balance in a decrease in financial condition. That's not necessarily the case. Now, here we had, in the left-hand column, the general fund went down $1.2 million. Debt service fund had an increase of $245,000. Your capital project fund went down $1.4 million, and all the other governmental funds combined had a small increase of $3,255, for an overall citywide decrease in fund balance of $2.4 million. That's a long way from an increase in net position of $1.2 million, but the next page will explain the differences. Again, we're starting at the top with a decrease in fund balance of $2.4 million. Now, the biggest items here are the capital outlays and the debt issues. When you spend money on capital assets, that is a use of your fund balance, but it's not a decrease in your financial condition. You're exchanging one asset for another. So your fund, your equity or the worth of the city doesn't go down by capital outlay. You're exchanging one asset for another. The same thing goes along with the repayment of debt. It is a decrease of your fund balance, but again, you're exchanging an asset for a reduction in your liabilities. Again, no change to your net worth. So that's why we have a difference of a $2.4 million decrease in fund balance and a $1.2 million increase in the financial condition of the city. Couple of other things just to mention, the general fund budget was, all the expenditures were under budget on page 77. It's a budget comparison. We start with the original budget because I think that's important. Comparing an amended budget to actual is easy to do because you make amendments through the year. So those always should be fairly close. But in comparing your original budget that council adopted in September of 2012 for the 13 fiscal year, I think is good information for your users. Now, how close was the original budget to the actual results of operation? So, in the left-hand column is your original budget as adopted by council. The second column is the budget that has been amended throughout the year, and then we're compared to the actual results for the fiscal year, you have your variance column. Looking at the revenues, there were no overall net changes from the original budget to the final budget in terms of total revenues. The actual results of operation from your budget, we were short $646,000 from what was anticipated in revenues for the fiscal year. That's a 1.5% variance from what was anticipated at the beginning of the year to what actual results were. That's pretty close, that's pretty close. Total expenditures, original budget to the final did increase as a result of changes in plans, changes in projects. So there was a need to go in and amend the general fund expense budget during the year. And then your comparison there, the variance is a positive variance of $5.5 million. The big categories there is under Public Safety and Developmental, and the big one in developmental is the street department. Obviously, there were some projects that were anticipated that didn't get completed, thereby resulting in that large favorable variance. Sure hope y'all have some questions.
Well, we just got this, so, it's really good.
And I understand that, Mayor, I always do leave the option open that after y'all've had an opportunity to go through this, I'd certainly be happy to come back at a future council meeting and address any questions that y'all might have. Now, also included, I think, is, as part of an audit, sometimes we do make recommendations, suggestions for staff for improving procedures, and I think there was a copy of that letter also presented in the read file. Again, I don't have any comments to make about that letter tonight other than, after y'all've had a chance to review that, I certainly would be happy to come back at a future council meeting and address any questions that y'all may have.
How long have you done our, the audit now?
Since 1983. Kind of coincides with the, coincides with the 31 years of consecutive certificates of awards, so.
Okay, wow, so Gilbert's pretty easy to work with, I guess.
At times.
But actually, I would, I would, that's a good answer, because, you know, we don't want it to be a perfect relationship, you know, it's, it's... I noticed he had a hard time sitting there letting you discuss this alone, so.
Well, we did go out for audits, our bids before, so.
And I remember, and that's what, I didn't realize it's been that long, but I remember that when he went out. Do you audit other cities, municipalities?
Yes.
How many do y'all?
Nine others.
Nine others? All in this area, South Texas?
Yes.
How do we stand out compared to those others? If, you don't have to answer.
Well, I mean, in terms of the size, y'all are the largest. Now, in terms of staff, one of the best. You know, we've had, you know, y'all have utilized technology in the finance department more than any other city that we work with. The size of the finance office staff here is smaller than many cities that we work with that are 20% the size of the City of Victoria.
Really?
And that's a technology issue.
Okay, very good, very good. We report, I appreciate your comments early on about all the extra information, and it shows, I think, our transparency and willingness to be very open with everyone regarding our finances, which we should be, so I very much appreciate that. I think that, you know, I need to go back and absorb this. If I have questions, I'll ask staff, if I need to contact you, I will, I don't... Council, do y'all have any questions?
Yeah, I gotta wait through it.
I would certainly encourage that council spend some time, especially in light of y'all are approaching the budget season. The historical information in the back of this report, under the statistical section, certainly gives you some, you know, where were we three years ago? Where were we five years ago? I think there's a lot of information that can be utilized in this document.
Yeah, I'm glad you pointed that out, that's very helpful. Okay, I know I'll spend some time with this. Council? Thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much.
Good work.
Thanks, Steve.
Congratulations, Gilbert. And Andrew, and everybody in your department.
On the sometimes instead of all the time? Are you congratulating him on the comment of sometimes versus all the time?
Wait, I went over my head.
With Steve saying, yeah, sometimes.
Oh, 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 yeah, no, I don't, you know. Yeah, I think maybe I better not say anything. Good job by all involved. Mr. Short?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you're aware, currently in our CIP FY 2014, we have a project entitled Downtown Overlay Phase 2 Project. And it's original, and it's, estimated cost is $1.4 million. Its original intent and scope is to come into the remainder of the streets that were included in the Phase 1 Downtown Utility Replacement Project, and where those streets where we've replaced the utilities now, and we've, we had to cut the street up in order, of course, to put the new utilities, and now we've patched them back. The intent of this project was to come in, mill off hot mix, and replace it with a new hot mix overlay to seal that street and get rid of that patched appearance, so, you know, serve both a maintenance function, a repair function, as well as an aesthetic function. And then, of course, the overlay itself then triggers a requirement to either add ADA compliant handicap ramps where they are not there, or to, if they are there, to bring those up to current standards. And so that was our intent, much like we did on, with Downtown Overlay Phase 1 Project, like we did on Glass and Bridge Street. Between the time we completed Phase 1 and now, however, ADA rules have changed, and in order to do this project as we originally intended now, because of the high crown in some of these asphalt streets and the new rules, we would have to install eyebrows at most of these locations. Even though there are current handicap ramps at most of these locations, in order to bring them into compliance, we would have to install eyebrows, like we did on Main Street. And, of course, that drives the cost to $2.4 million, almost double, and really changes the whole scope of the project. It no longer is a street overlay project where we're installing ramps. Now, it's a, an eyebrow and ramp project with a little bit of street work, and it throws it out of the budget beyond what we could, what we have money to do right now. So with that in mind, I have a recommendation, what I would recommend to you is that instead of overlaying the streets like we had originally intended, let's go ahead and apply a seal coat to the asphalt streets in this area. It will still provide that maintenance seal, it will still cover the patches. It will not trigger at this time the installation of new handicap ramps nor eyebrows. And here again, most of these ramps have, most of these intersections have ramps now. Because the cost is so much less, we can also do a seal coat to more areas, especially the, what I'm recommending is the two very heavily traveled Juan Lynn Street. We could do it all the way between Main and Navarro, and also Goodwin, another very heavily traveled street. We could do it all the way from Main to Navarro. We would still overlay the last block of Bridge, Main, and Glass between Juan Lynn and Church, and also those two blocks of Juan Lynn that lie just to the south of us here, or just to the north of us here, excuse me, between Bridge and Main and between Bridge and Glass then. Estimated cost to do that would bring the project back into budget, estimated at $1.441 million. And then, at some point in the future, we'll need to rebuild those roadways, and we will plan to do so, and like we do with all roadways that are completely rebuilt, we'll come back and bring everything up to full compliance at that time, because we'll be taking the crown, the high crown, out of those roadways at that time, and can then put in the ramps without having to do eyebrows. So that is my recommendation to you, if possible, I'd like to get some feedback so we know whether to move ahead with the design of this project or not.
I think that's an excellent choice. I've gotten positive and negative on the eyebrows, both sides of that. Many people perceive that it's reducing the number of parking spaces, but as we know from an engineering standpoint, it has not. But the perception is that it did. In spite of the engineering facts. But this would buy us a lot of time, make it look a lot better. Those old streets have been, they have such a crown to them.
Yes.
It buys us a lot of time.
Plan is to two-course, similar to what we're doing in Woodway.
It is exactly what we're doing in Woodway and Bridle Ridge, Saddle Brook, and hopefully, as we move through the budget process, we'll adopt a maintenance program and we'll be doing seal coats all over town. That's what we really need to do to maintain these streets.
What's the longevity of overlay versus seal coat?
You know, on our main, our maintenance plan says you'd seal coat every seven years and overlay every 15. So overlay's about twice.
This, now in the middle of your map, is DeLeon Plaza there, so I'm trying to get my orientation up.
Are you looking at the map with the Goodwin and Juan Lynn extended all the way to Navarro? Or are you looking at the previous map? There are two in the packet.
Okay, the first one is the old, the second one is the new.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, the shading didn't come out too good here, but, so what does this involve? A gravel, spreading it out, and spraying it down to stick, and?
It is, it is, it's application of an emulsion followed with a rock topping, and then another layer of emulsion and a rock topping, yes.
Because I know in some cases down here, let me try to articulate my concern. This is a big difference in a nice, smooth hot mix, which is what we were gonna do, but now we can't, which is just very disappointing. I mean, I'm sensitive to the whole handicap issue, I know that, but it's just a shame that we can't do what we planned to do because of that, because we're moving from a very smooth hot mix to gravel.
Yes, sir.
Now, some of these streets are concrete, you know, you made a comment a minute ago that when we replace a street, some of these are gonna be there a long time.
Yeah, well, the con-
Because they've already been there, but.
The concrete streets, though, do not have the high crown in them.
Right, right, forest does not. So you're gonna?
And, and I will say that, yes, sir, you're correct, it's not a smooth hot mix surface, but even if we put a hot mix surface down now, seven years from now, I would hope to be applying a seal coat to it.
Right, because it's gonna move and shift, even though it's got the concrete underneath, which is probably, not a better base than that, right?
Because it's, and also because it's a protective coating.
Yeah.
So we're gonna do maintenance?
Yes, ma'am, I almost wish we could see this, though, it's just, down there, it's just different. You know, and it, the hot mix, I can recognize that, because we all can go down Main and see the difference there, this is different, so I'm just concerned. I'm thinking about, like, around Lord's Church and around that area, I think that's on this map. And I'm just trying to visualize what this is gonna look and be like for the citizens.
But you're saying in probably another five years, Main Street will be seal coated?
Saying, if we adopt a maintenance plan, at some point, they're all gonna get seal pointed.
Yeah, I understand. Okay.
And that's why we brought this report back, it's different than what we proposed in the budget, so it's, it's different than what you, you were expecting, but at the same time, it's what we're gonna be doing in Woodway and those other subdivisions.
I think, and I think we've talked about this before, one of the things that's important, just to reinforce, is the loose aggregate, clean it up as best possible. Hope the contractors can do that, encourage that.
We will require sweeping after.
Not let a lot of it build up in spots and clean it up, and so.
And what we're doing as part of our, our Woodway-Bridle Ridge project, in addition to sweeping afterwards, we're coming back six months later and applying a fog seal on it, just to lock everything, lock any aggregate that is loose back down.
Also using a smaller aggregate, too, than we've done historically.
In an effort to try to make it smoother.
Good, good, and I understand Woodway is maybe next month, they may start out there.
Yes.
Which is good, I was over there recently, and with a little bit of rain seemed to trigger, you know, we're just in time over there to save that, to save us a lot of money in the long run, hopefully. So, I'm interested to see the quality of the work they do over there. Okay, no, I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Abrams, go ahead.
Yeah, I can't emphasize enough the sweeping.
Yes.
I wouldn't do it just once, but two or three times. Because that rock will loosen as the travelers, the cars go by. And the other thing, I'm sure you explored, because this is a historical district, and these, these are new rules coming down, federal handicap, ADA.
Yes.
There's no opportunity for waiver. There's no opportunity for waiver or?
Not that I'm aware of, and the engineer on the project hasn't advised me. I will look into that one more time and make sure, but I don't believe there's any waivers for, for public.
Ramps.
Public ramps and.
Because it looked, you know, in some cases, we've seen some ramps that it just don't work.
Right.
When they butt up against a telephone pole, for example, or an electric pole.
I've seen that.
It's just a waste of money, but, okay, thank you.
So consensus to move forward? Thank you, Leanne.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Gush, you're next.
Mayor and council, every year, the legal department touches base with all of the businesses who are currently receiving tax abatement through economic development agreements. We've been doing that for the last couple of years in order to report back to the taxing entities for collection purposes. This year, I'm pleased to report that most of the entities are in compliance with their tax abatement agreements, but I do want to give you an update tonight on one that is not currently in compliance. I'm not asking for any action tonight. There's a possibility that council will need to take action in the future, and I want you to have plenty of advance notice of that. Keen Transportation is the, the business that is located immediately outside of Loop 463, south of Business 59, that is in the business of transporting heavy machinery, mostly Caterpillar tractors. And they were given a tax abatement agreement. They have told us that they are not in compliance with that agreement because they do not have the required number of staff positions currently on staff. They understand that this may mean that their tax abatement agreement winds up getting canceled, and they may have to pay back some tax abatement if they have received any abatement to this point. Currently, they are in a cure period. Their contract requires us to give them notice of their noncompliance and to give them 60 days to cure. Once that cure period is over, if they are continuing to not be in compliance with their tax abatement agreement, I will be bringing back to you a recommendation to consider termination of that tax abatement agreement. At that time, council will, will be able to examine the issue and make a decision. I expect that'll be in the August timeframe, before we'll, we'll get to that point. However, I do think that's the direction that we're going to be going. I, the, the company did not give us indication that they expected to be in compliance by the end of their cure period. So it's the, it's the way these contracts work, and council will be asked to make a decision, most likely, around August.
Quick question. Their, their tax abatement is about to end? We're at the end of their period?
Their tax abatement is actually getting ready to start. They're a very new company. Their tax abatement agreement was put in place just a year or a year and a half ago. And the way those contracts are written, they often are delayed by a couple of years after the, the tax abatement agreement is actually executed. And so I'm not sure at this point, I haven't gone back to confirm, whether they received abatement for their 2013 taxes that were due this year. And, and as a result of that, they may very well have not yet received any tax abatement, and cancellation of the agreement may not actually require them to pay back any money. If they didn't get any benefit of the agreement, they would have nothing to pay back.
The job performance has to happen at the beginning of the tax abatement period, or? I thought it was at the end.
There are specific numbers, in this case, employment figures, that have to be met throughout the agreement.
Targets?
Targets, thank you. It's a good number. And so every year, they have to certify that they have at least that number of employees on staff, and they have told us they don't.
There's not a clause in there that gives them a grace period other than the 60 days?
That is the grace period. It's that 60-day cure. Yes, sir.
As I recall, they have to fill out their abatement paperwork with appraisal district, is that correct?
That's, this is a part of that process. The appraisal district requires us to certify that they are in compliance, and so we ask them to give us a certificate so that we can forward it on to the appraisal district.
So if they have not done so in prior years, they have not received any money, have they?
That's correct.
Okay. So this would be the first year that they would receive an abatement. However, if they do not qualify, there wouldn't be anything necessary to be paid back. They haven't received anything.
That's right. If they have not received an abatement yet, there would be nothing for them to pay back.
I was just trying to be clear on that, that I was saying that correctly.
Right.
Do you know, off the top, you had the job numbers?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I'll, I'll have all of that information for you when we consider that at a later date.
I think the contract's working, as it should, you know? I mean, I wish them the best, and perhaps they'll come into compliance, but it's the way it's supposed to work.
That's right.
Exactly. I mean, they, they tried hard. If they couldn't come up to the mark of what they agreed to, that's fine.
They're still here, still doing business, so, very good. Are there any other questions about that? I did talk to Mr. Halliburton briefly today, and he mentioned that VDC was working very well with him. He had high praise for them, so, in terms of communication about all these kind of things, as well as city staff, so. Okay, is there anything else? No work session, no executive session? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.